Welcome to the Byram Hills Board of Education Meeting, September 12, 2017. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just because Greg cannot be here today, can I have a motion to approve Jen Monroy as District Clerk Pro Tem?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Thank you for doing that, Jen.
Did he get paid actually for that?
No. And also want to welcome to our board table Jim Reese, who is our interim Assistant Superintendent for Business. Thank you for joining us tonight, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And hope everyone had a good start to school. We had one week down, and it was great to see the community out at home coming. A beautiful weekend for that, and a lot of fun activities and some great sports. The meeting was called to order 7:05. We went right into executive session, and we discussed four items. All right, hold on one second. Item 3.1, legal matter donation. Item 3.2, legal matter individual employee. 3.3, student matter individual student. And 3.4 was a public safety matter emergency response planning. At this time, are there any matters that are not on the agenda that anybody in the public would like to address? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adopt our agenda?
So moved.
Second? Okay, and all in favor? All right, and can I have a motion to adopt our consent agenda for personnel, special services, and business?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, and I just want to highlight something that the board just approved in our consent agenda for business. We are thrilled to have just approved a donation from the Armonk United Soccer Club for a school district for development and renovation of athletic fields in the amount of $200,000. And I just want to point out that this organization, Armonk United, near and dear to my heart because I'm a soccer player now, it started there, and there's over 400 of our students in our district that participate in Armonk United. And we are joined tonight by Kevin Landisman, who is the Regional Commissioner. And I'd like to introduce Kevin to the public. Would you mind standing?
Sure.
And just, uh... Just a second, we'll basically do two. Kevin, we are just beyond thrilled, and we are really excited for this. And soccer, Armonk United, ASO, it's been a great friend to the district. And you've really helped build a fantastic soccer team for the boys and the girls throughout our district as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having been the Regional Commissioner 23 years ago.
Were you really?
I was. Well, then it was ASO. Now you're semi-pro, I understand. It's really thrilling for me to see the growth of the program. Our soccer has certainly become one of the mainstays in our athletic program. I would say in the past 15 years, there's been no more successful division, or rather, Section 1 program in the state, or Class 8 program in the state than Byram Hills Soccer. So to see what you've been able to do, and to see the growth, and especially to see the contribution you're making to the district, it should be commended. Thank you.
Did you want to say anything about...
Sure, yeah, I mean, we've had... Our sights set on this donation for probably five years now. We've been saving up for this exact day. We finally got there. We have our financial position set to where we can do this comfortably. I think I can say pretty much certainty that it's going to be more than $200,000. Our goal is to get you $250,000 by next September, and we've already given 200. So we're going to get you more, I promise. Plus, beyond that, I'm very much trying to get other athletic organizations in town on board to make donations as well. Maybe not to the same extent that we're able to, but if we can get a couple more donations, it could be even better what we could do with these fields. So we're thrilled. We think the fields need renovating, and have been needing renovating for a long time. We're happy to help contribute to make it happen. There's so many kids in this district that play soccer, over 400. We don't have a single player, not one player, who plays Armonk United Soccer that does not go to school in this district. Not one player. So this is your soccer organization, and it leads right to Castleford on the travel arm, and then eventually all these kids are going to be playing for... The better ones are going to be playing for the high school teams. So we really believe that we're developing a program here, and if we can have better fields, even more kids might come out and play. So thrilled to do this, and can't thank you enough for accepting the donation.
You're all being kind.
And I just wanted to add that our conversations have been so positive and so student-focused in supporting the development of these fields, and I'd like you to extend to your board how grateful we are. And as I offered, I would love to come and meet with the board and extend my thanks to them. Watching a community partnership like this for the sake of so many children is incredibly powerful for us, so thank you.
I would like to, with the board's permission, amend the motion that was made when we accepted the business consent agenda. We just accepted this en masse. I would like to move that we accept the donation for the Armonk United Soccer Club with gratitude. I think that should be reflected in the minutes.
That's fantastic. So pulling it out?
Yeah, I'd like to pull it out retroactively with permission to board, and move to that's a motion read that we accept the donation of the United Armonk Soccer Club with gratitude.
Sure, I'll... Maybe one second, Matt?
Sure.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, really.
Thank you. And you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but please don't feel like you have to.
In other words, in other words.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much, thank you. And actually, another good piece of news I want to pull out from our consent agenda that we also just approved is in there was a donation from the education, Byram Hills Education Foundation, to fund their Instagrams. Again, we've been doing this for a number of years. This is the $25,000 Instagram, and I know that a district will put it to good use. Then we'll be hearing later on in the year where that money will be going. And a little bit later on, we are going to talk about the Education Foundation again because of another donation that we were getting, but this was for the Instagrams. So want to express our thanks to the Education Foundation, another fantastic partner in our community. Okay, and that brings us to unfinished business.
Board goals.
Board goals. Sorry, I'm having a hard time using my new Chromebook. Okay. So just to set this up, we are new business, we're talking about 9.1, our board goals. And at our last meeting, we all got to see recommendations of what the board goals would be. We had a healthy discussion, with the exception of Mike's input, because Mike couldn't be here, so we'll hear from you tonight, Mike, on that. And what's reflected in this board packet, I think very well, is everybody's comments. And so this is the second draft that we're seeing of our board goals. And one note I just want to make, when we're talking about the goals, we always say that there's this tension between what is the ongoing work of the board and what should be pulled out as a goal. And what we could just consider doing is keep as a headings those items that we always have that are basically ongoing work of the board. And if there's something that needs to be pulled out that particular year as a goal, we can bullet it underneath that. And then when there's something such as this year where we have negotiations that are not something that we do every year, that can be pulled out as a separate goal. So just a suggestion, a thought, as we're going through that maybe to just help with that tension that we have between what's ongoing work of the board and what is a goal.
I would just note that I think it's a healthy tension.
It's a healthy tension. I mean, in the best of terms.
Yeah.
Okay, so to set this up, I think, Jen, would you mind telling everybody what changed from last year? And then after that, Mike, I want to give you the opportunity, since you didn't get to talk before about the goals, and then we can see what everybody else thinks about the revisions.
Sure, so Mike, for your benefit, the last time we had some comments about the professional development plan in the Excellence in Teaching and Learning Goal, and really looking at that professional development plan that will be created this year to evaluate how we deliver professional development, and also how we look at a curriculum review cycle. So that was the first change. The next one was about the district-wide data team. We are creating a district-wide data team, and we added the exploration of a data dashboard. So spending this year exploring a data dashboard to really study the impact of the curriculum and instruction on assessments and on student achievement. Regarding, there were no changes regarding negotiations as a goal for fiscal accountability and communications. For the budget study, one recommendation was to really look at the potential risks of the five-year budget projections. So we added that. For the enrollment study, we are looking to see the impact of an enrollment decline on high school scheduling and courses. That was important. We also had the per pupil cost study, and really looking at a benchmark study of per pupil costs to see that these costs are really aligned with our educational and fiscal goals. And finally, for the athletic, we added an athletics facilities review. The board felt that it was time to do that. Review use, condition, prioritize upgrades at all of our fields. And then finally, the last change happened in the fifth goal, where we added education reform and advocacy, just to make sure that we're continuing not only to monitor federal and state initiatives, but that we're really advocating for policies that would most benefit Byram Hills. And how we might do that through our connections with NISBA and West Chester-Putnam School Boards Association, having dialogue when we feel it's appropriate. And those were our substantive changes. That's great.
I think they're fantastic. The two things I would highlight is the student leadership piece, as we enter this world of data and computers and artificial intelligence, creating leaders as a core component of our education process, I think is critical. So I was thrilled to see that, and I certainly continue to endorse that as a focus within the education curriculum. And then certainly, in the facilities review with respect to athletics, you know, that's certainly necessary. It's been a number of years, and we've got a lot on this list, but obviously, these are goals, and I think they're strategic, which they need to be. So those would be my two comments, and I'm actually thrilled to see them, so.
Great, all right, thank you. So I want to open up the floor to discussion on these changes. What does everybody think? Who wants to speak first?
Well, all right, if I must. I'm comfortable with these goals. I'm glad the, uh, I'm glad the goal for education reform and advocacy was put in. I think it's important. I think it, as I said the last time, I think it's meaningful for Scott that he has the backing of this as a goal when he's out in the wilds of West Putt and the other entities. I think it's important. And succession plan and leadership development, I think you never can do enough of in a school district, so. And lastly, I agree with Michael wholeheartedly on the athletic facilities review. I mean, it's time. We recognize it's time, considering the decisions we're already making on it. And, you know, I think we've spent a lot of money over the years, and I think we have an obligation to the taxpayers to keep these facilities up, and to always analyze what's best and how best to spend the money on them. So I'm comfortable. I think these are good goals. I think they meet the test, and they're also five goals, even though there are subparts. I think we're all going to be comfortable with five goals with subparts, so I'm happy.
What's, I think you, I clarify, is that what you had said about athletic? I thought you said the opposite, that you thought it was too many goals.
No, earlier when we spoke about it, you know...
Okay.
No, I would say, especially given the donation and height, and I just thought that in general, sometimes, if you're giving yourselves too many specific goals, it's difficult to accomplish all these things. But the reality is it's necessary, plus we just had a huge donation. I think the timing of that matched with that as a goal, I would, you know, so thank you.
Yes, I'm clarifying, okay, okay.
I feel really good about these goals. What I like about them the most is that they're really tangible and actionable. They're not just very high level, like you don't really know. This really sets out, you know, some of the important issues that we need to be focused on, so I am good.
He's making fun of my screen size.
I could never see what's right size.
Yeah, I'm sharing with you. I'm in agreement. I feel really comfortable. I like how the professional development plan was reworded. I feel very comfortable with that, and I also agree with the athletic review and adding the education reform and advocacy. I think it's imperative to keep that on there, and I'm very comfortable, and I think these are well done.
It's interesting, because you never know as the year goes on, what's going to arise. You think you have it covered here, and you realize you don't. So I think we've done a good job throwing a blanket of what we believe to be the key focus of where we should be, and we'll see. But I'd like to...
Okay. Anybody else?
I think five is a lot. Five goals, I think they're substantial goals. These are not, you know, just lip service. These are significant goals, and they're, it's, this is going to be tough for us to achieve all of them. I would say if, you know, in my opinion, I think if we were to cut it down to four, the one I would lose is the education reform and advocacy, because I would argue that it's a business as usual. But I'm willing to concede that this is, that it's, I think it's well-written, it's a good goal. It's just a question of whether or not it makes, you know, having it on there as a fifth goal is making the full list unachievable or difficult to achieve. You know, but I think they're very well-written, that they're good goals, they are actionable, they're, you know, they're well-written.
I think they're great goals, and I think, I have full faith and confidence in our board, as well as in our superintendents, that we will be able to meet these goals after all our discussions. I think that some of them are already full steam ahead, so I think that they are attainable, and we should challenge ourselves to always do better. So I'm very happy with these goals.
Me, if I give you some comfort, I'll tell you that in the years I was on the board when we were doing major facilities renovation projects, which kept us here till 2:00 in the morning figuratively, we also had four goals or so.
I'll tell you that.
You know, and so we'll be able to do it. We don't have a project like that which is going to suck up so much of our time that we'll be scrambling. I think we'll be...
I just want to make a couple really, really minor wordsmith things, if you guys will indulge me for a second. The succession planning and leadership development. I'm thinking about what Lara had said about the leadership development being such a big, important part of this, and how succession planning is something that we always do. Simply, what if we were to switch it to leadership development succession planning? So leadership development is in the forefront of that, because that's something we do all the time. Right? That's something, you know...
I'm not wedded to the title, I'm happy with that.
Because it sort of just puts the emphasis on that whole, you know, the leadership for everybody, because succession is something we touch on here and there when we need to, but...
I don't see the order really being determined of what we're doing, but I'm not opposed to it.
That's easy. Any other thought? I mean, it's not a major thing. And the other is just very small, is under education reform and advocacy. I know that I had said that I wanted to make sure that all the board members take upon themselves to keep up on this, but I don't, I guess we don't really need to spell it out this way. Each board member will continue his or her commitment. I think we could just say the board as a whole, you know, the board will continue. I know you did it because I did something I said, I realize that, but as I'm sitting here, it doesn't...
The board will continue its commitment?
Yeah, as opposed to each board member.
Makes it a little easier.
That's easier.
Yeah.
Mike doesn't have to do any work on that.
Exactly.
That's good. I'm happy for that. That's good.
The collective "we."
That's good. Why don't we just say that Scott Levy will continue?
He would get talent, right?
And I just, I want to ask, I want to ask our administrators here, I mean, what do you all think about these? Are you comfortable with these? Because obviously, the lion's share, I know they're board goals, but let's be real, the lion's share, the work ends up falling on your shoulders. Do you all think it's, you're comfortable with these?
Absolutely. It's not as though we're starting the work now, so the work has been growing, and we've been working toward many of these already. So I feel like the foundation's really strong for us to springboard from these. Absolutely.
Well, that's important, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm really happy to hear that, Tim, because as I looked at them, I thought many of these goals had had foundation and groundwork already, where we're fine-tuning some of these. You know, something like the district data-wide team makes me nervous, because that seems like something a little new, and, you know, but the others all seem pretty consistent with the message we're focused on.
I've been thinking about the district-wide data team since the end of last year. Jen and I already were having conversations about that. We have building-level data teams, so we'll have an overarching district team to help bring those teams together. And I'm in good partnership with Peggy and with Andrew, who will help me lead that team. So I think we've got a great team in place to start that work.
That's great.
What I like about the goals are that we stay student-focused with many of our K-12 criteria and our lens, but we're covering every other aspect of board governance. You know, we're looking at fiscal implications and future of the district. I think that we're pretty encompassing, and current things that are occurring like negotiations.
So it sounds like we have consensus, so can I have a motion to approve our board goals for 217 to 218?
As amended by your comments.
Yes.
Right? By Robin's comments, yeah. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Nice job, everybody!
Yay!
Now we can get to work, right?
Right.
Really, really nice, nice job. Very ambitious, and everybody's input really valuable. Good discussion, Mike. Thank you. And that leads us to new business, and we're going to have a presentation of the results of the New York State Education Department Testing Program, and that is Tim.
One second, switch screens.
Sure.
Yeah. Want to give credit to that picture of Justin Schmalhold, who you met at a previous board presentation on Steve.
That's a great picture.
He went to Wampus. We brought him down and asked him if he did drone footage for us, so you see some of that on the Wampus's page, and took incredible photos. I mean, that's like, that's a photo that you would get for happy kids at school. So I wanted to credit him on that piece. So thank you. So I'm going to present our New York State assessment results. I do want to emphasize that the state tests are only one lens into our students' achievement and performance, that we use multiple measures. And as a district, we are also looking at ways we systematically capture that data and present on student performance data. And over time, that'll be some of the work that the district data team does, is looking beyond just state test results to actual student performance data, and how we can track that over time. So this is one result. It's important to look at and analyze, and I hope tonight we can dig a little deeper into the assessment results and look at some patterns and trends, draw some conclusions, and help see where we're focusing our work as a result of this report. I may go through some slides quickly, it's a dense report, but feel free to stop me or back me up if you have some questions. I do want to just point out and highlight the last two bullets. I did add something that I remembered, and it's hard to keep up with the state changing everything. So the last bullet I adjusted on my screen, it's not in your presentation yet. But the state reduced the testing time to two days, starting in the 2018 tests. That was announced in June. It surprised everyone, because we all found out in the field through the media. And then it just took us until the end of August until they told us which dates. That's why our calendar is, will need to be adjusted. But the testing is two dates, and I wanted to point that out. Those were some former comments from our commissioner. One thing that they did was change the tests in 2016, and said that you're not able to compare 2016 to previous years, although we will be looking at lots of trends to compare. I think we do have to look at that, but the tests were not valid in that way. We looked at this at our last meeting, we looked at the test refusals. I'm looking at a comparison between '16 and '17, and we do see a reduction in our percent of students who refuse the tests, which is good, although we do see that dramatic increase as the grades get older. And we're still well over the number to meet our accountability requirement. So we're well over the 95%, particularly in middle school. Hopefully, with the state's initiative to reduce testing time, that we may hopefully start bringing more families back into the testing system. I want to point out eighth grade, those numbers are so high that I do believe that the data in this report, specifically with eighth grade, is probably data we should really look at with a grain of salt. And I would argue that that's not valid data, those eighth-grade results. So because that opt out, that test refusal is so high. We're going to be looking at the 3 through 8 tests, and this is the performance levels on which they are rated. We are looking for students who meet proficiency at level three, which is meeting the standards, and then exceeding standards is level four. So when we talk about percent proficiency, we're looking at level three or higher. This was data that I've given to you previously.
Can you just go back one screen, I'm sorry? I just was looking at the level two, three definitions, just give me one second.
Yep, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And this was data I presented before. This is just the raw data on the percent of students reaching proficiency at each of those performance levels at each grade. The green band in the middle is the percent of students reaching proficiency at levels three and four. Now we'll dig a little deeper into comparisons and trends over time, because that's where we can start understanding some patterns. This graph is showing all of our students together, and how they performed on the 3 through 8 tests in both ELA and math. And you see that, starting with 2013, 2013, I used that year because that's the start of the new Common Core assessments. Tests were completely rewritten in 2013. We have a 5% increase from 2013 to 2017 in both math and ELA. The state data is 9% increase from, over that same time period. That's about what I would expect. I wouldn't expect we would be increasing at the same rate, because our proficiency is already so much higher than the state that it would be hard to be increasing at the same rate at a high level. So not surprised by that number. I would argue that, again, in ELA, that bar at 60% of students, I think that should be higher. I think our test refusals there is impacting that score. And we'll see that come up in some other graphs. This is a comparison of our students to New York State. The red line is the New York State data. My general rule of thumb has been that we would hope our results would be about double the state's. That's where we've been on the old tests pre-2013. It's just a rule of thumb, it's no general technical rule. You see that we're either above or below that in different grade levels, and that do we follow the trend of the state? You see, we go against it in some places, like from fifth to sixth grade, while the state is decreasing, we actually jump up pretty significantly in the sixth grade. We go down a little bit from fourth to fifth. I think our drop is a little more than I would expect compared to the state's drop, so that's something we'll continue, you'll see in some other trends as we go through this data with fifth grade. Now, that pickup from fifth to sixth happened last year too, right? It did. So it's not necessarily cohort-driven as it is. It's not, yeah. We looked at some cohort, and you do see the increase in the cohort, but there's something in sixth grade that we're getting these amazing results. We did go down this year, and we're going to see something happen, and we'll talk about that. One thing to point out is you see our eighth grade's a little bit lower, but we still are in the 95th percentile in New York State, just to give context to this, that, you know, I think it's just important, sometimes the bars in comparison make us look like some things we're not achieving at the level we should be. When you step back and look at a really broad view, we're doing really well with our eighth-grade students in ELA. And the question that I have, and we'll look at that when we get to the Regents data, is are these students prepared for the Regents exam? And that's what the state tests are supposed to be doing, is helping us make sure students are ready for high school, the high school challenge. Same graph for math. We're seeing it sixth and seventh, again, more, significantly more than double the state standard there, and that's been consistent for several years with our performance in sixth and seventh grade. One thing to point out, so that eighth grade, we've talked about this before, we do not double-test our students. So the students who are in the accelerated program do take the algebra Regents, and therefore are not included in that group. You see that drop off state-wide as well, so we're in the pattern with the state. So I thought, let's analyze that with the algebra students. So the students who do take algebra, do they reach proficiency? And if you add them into the mix, you end up with 84% of our eighth graders reaching proficiency, either on the math eight or the algebra standards. So that gives us a little bit of context, and helps us see overall where the trend would be. I would expect all of those algebra kids would be proficient or better if they took the math eight, and would probably be adding to that bar. So that's where I would anticipate we are in eighth grade. I want to look at our students with disability, and the numbers are low for us when we look at that. But again, comparing it to the state, you do see that we are toggling right around double what the state level is for students with disabilities. Not that that makes us, you know, that we're happy with that. We're still looking at ways that we can address the students who are really struggling, and how we support those students through our system. So that's something you'll see in one of our recommendations that we're looking at for next year.
How are you defining students with disabilities?
Students that are classified special education.
IUPs or 504s as well?
Yes, IUPs, not 504s. 504s are considered general education students. And then that's, we've gone up three percentage points from the start of 2013.
Tim, do the other numbers include the special, like students twelve?
They do, that's everybody.
Okay, let's just pull this out.
So I pulled this out just to disaggregate it. The state does do disaggregated groupings, and the... So relatively speaking, we're doing well with those students. Again, our goal is to get a hundred percent of those students reaching proficiency. And similar with the math results, we do a little bit better than in ELA in terms of how much higher than New York State we're doing. And that's been up two percentage points. So these groups are small cohorts, so we see a lot of fluctuation. I wouldn't expect the growth to be so much linear. I think you're going to see lots of fluctuation because every grade level is different and every student's needs are so different. And we're in the ninetieth percentile this year with the students with disabilities in mathematics in Westchester. Now, this is an interesting graph. I'm going to come over here to explain this. This is percentile ranking compared to New York State. So you take all of almost seven hundred districts in New York State, and you see how we're performing in comparison to them. So we're looking at three years of data from 2015, sixteen, and seventeen in those colors. And then we're looking at the grade levels from third to eighth in math, from third to eighth in ELA, ELA and math. So generally, Byron Hills is scoring above the ninetieth percentile. That's where we're going to be in the ninety percentile in state, sometimes ninety-five. So we're shooting for that ninety-five area, nineties we're happy with. So when I look at this graph, I just go toward what's below ninety and where we've seen some areas. So when I look here, I'm seeing third grade ELA a little below, and that's the last two years. I do see in 2015, though, we were around ninety-fifth percentile, which shows that we can get there. Something going on these last two years, I'm not sure. So we're going to, our data analysis will get us to unpack that a little bit. Did we make any curricular changes? Is there anything that's changing in our instruction that could be driving that? So Peggy and I have talked a lot about this data, and we're looking at how we can explore that with our faculty. And then also, fifth grade's hovering, came down a little bit this year to the ninetieth percentile. Other than that, we're about where we expect. That red one here at seventh was 2015. I'll talk a little bit later about seventh grade in another slide.
What is the, if we drew a 2017 line for the statewide, where would it be?
Well, this is percent, so this is comparing us to all the other districts. So the average would be a fifty. Yeah, that would be a fifty because that's the average.
I guess that's right.
This is percentile. Half of the districts above.
The question's, the answer's evident in the question. All right. I got it.
So this is, we're scoring better than, say, ninety percent of the other districts. In math, looking at it, again, third grade here in the last two years, something happening there. So this is interesting that these are at the same time, so we're trying to unpack that a little bit. And then looking at fifth grade in math, the last, you know, there's some flexibility that we're hovering around ninety. I'd like to see what's going on there a little bit. We've talked about eighth grade math. Besides that, that's sort of the things that stand out.
You can't be unhappy with those results.
We certainly can, and that's why context is important when we're looking at some of these subtle changes. Still, relatively speaking to the state, we're doing quite well. Our students are doing quite well. This is looking at simply Wampus, looking at the change, and I'll do the same for Critten then. We've seen it in eight-point growth from 2013 to 2017 overall in ELA and five points in math. Again, looking at trends. This graph is comparing year to year. We're seeing, you know, there's going to be some fluctuation year to year. So I see the fifth grade there that we dropped seven points from last year. So this is not cohort. This is fifth grade, one year, fifth grade and second year of different students. But let's look at the trend from 2013, when Common Core started. We see that we have been improving at all of those grade levels over from the start of Common Core. I like to look at that because there's going to be fluctuation year to year. Same thing in math. We do see fourth and fifth dropped. When we look at from the start of 2013, we are seeing increases, except in fourth grade, we did sort of level out again. That's interesting to me, something we'll look at a little closer. Doing the same for sixth grade. We're at five points in ELA and nine points in math from the start of the Common Core. That's all students together. Looking at the grade level again, so you see this big drop in sixth grade. This was really stunning to the sixth grade teachers. They're really disappointed. They had two years where their results were just off the charts. They're starting with, it's 2016, eighty-eight percent of the students reaching proficiency and dropping to seventy-one. Will we compare that, again, putting it in context, this year, even with that seventeen-point drop, we're still ranked number six in ELA in sixth grade in the state and number two in Westchester County. So in context, you know, the year before was just crazy on the charts. We were way up. We're number one in both New York, New York State and in Westchester, far from any other district.
It's just the, the left column is just a two-year change, right? It's sixteen and seventeen.
Yes. And then the other column is starting from 2013 to seventeen, looking at the change. So you do see sixth grade. That's the one that I'm curious about. It dropped there since the Common Core, although we're still doing well, so something maybe changed in the test. But the teachers are really exploring that because that really bothered the teachers when they saw those results.
I guess the other question that it raises is you look at it a different way, which is if you look at 2016, eighty-eight percent for the sixth grade. 2017, same cohort is eighty, not as big a drop. And then if you look at the seventy-two to the seventy-three, from the seventh grade into the eighth grade?
Yep.
If you look at it that way, it makes a little bit more sense.
Yeah. I have a cohort graph in there, so it sort of does that for us. But right, it does start to explain a little bit what's happening. You do have to look at cohort data, the same group of students, and see how they're performing. That tells the full picture.
Is there any other contributing factors that you have explored, or I mean, that's just odd?
We were just surprised because, again, two years in a row with the sixth grade, we're off the charts, and then this happened, although it's still relatively speaking off the charts. It's still really, really good.
Was that found throughout the state in the sixth grade population?
Not necessarily. Every district talks about, we always call each other when the results come out and say, what are you, what are you surprised by? Every district has their grade level that is surprising to them or various grade levels. So what may be surprising to us, other people are like, oh, no, our sixth grade has been this. We're more concerned about this grade. Everyone's different. I think, I'm not sure what the factors are. I think there's lots of variables that go into how students achieve on state tests. There's opt-outs, who are the students who opted out, for example? And there's just the differences, which is when we think about that we emphasize the scores solely for, you know, if that teacher's got a growth score on this, when there's that much fluctuation, is this really a true indicator of the teaching of the teachers? Because I wouldn't say those teachers are any different than they were the previous two years. They're working as hard, they're doing a lot of the same things. You would think it would just either sustain or get better. So that's surprising.
I think it's an argument for it not to, not to be based on these scores.
Exactly. It is an argument for that, that what's happening here. I can't quite explain this yet, so how do we capture that in a growth score to, is a teacher's evaluation? The teachers are unpacking this, and we're looking a little closer at it so we can try to understand where kids didn't do well, to inform the seventh-grade teachers and also help those teachers understand what was different from what we did in the previous two years. Math, similar types of things here. A drop in third grade, but when you look overall from thirteen to, 2013 to 2017, you see increases at all grade levels. Seventh grade in particular was, has had a big jump. This is the same graphs as those previous ones, or just looking at it in terms of bar This is the ELA comparison from year to year at each grade level. It's just looking at bar graphs from the right column, the previous slide, and same thing for math. So I won't spend any extra time on these graphs. This is cohort data, so this is where the story starts to unfold a little more. So this is ELA. Let's look at the same group of students. Color coding the years down at the bottom, so the bars correspond from 2013 through 2017. Sort of ignore out here because this was going back a couple of years. It's older data. This was back from 2013, fourteen, and fifteen. So I'm interested in these bars in here. So we do look, we're looking at the same group of students. We are seeing here, for example, the drop off, the third to fourth seems to be increasing. Here, we did drop down a little bit in fifth grade, and that's 2017. Here, you did see a little drop in fifth grade and then jump up in sixth grade, and that's a trend we tend to see, fifth to sixth. You see here, the sixth grade data last year was really high. It was, we were impressed here, and then it got even better, and suddenly we dropped it in sixth grade. So we're sort of confused by that, but we're figuring that out. So you are seeing overall upward trends. All of these are indicating the overall change from the beginning of that cohort to the end here. Right here, it's only fifth grade. I suspect that'll start going up in the middle school, and it'll get positive trend by the time they're in eighth grade. So what we're looking at here is overall trends of that cohort. Are we probably seeing an increase over time with that cohort? And will those students be ready for the ELA Regents exam and do well on that and be prepared for high school challenge? So that's, it helps us a little bit paint the story a little more, digging a little deeper into the students.
So can I ask you, did you differ when you discovered, so you report active work on any of?
I will, yeah. And I have some next steps or priorities I'll talk about at the end of the slide, and then we'll talk about what you, what will be hearing from me throughout the year around this. Again, similar stories in math. You can sort of see overall the trends. Again, the eighth grade being influenced a little bit there from not double testing our students. Again, we're looking at upward trends over time in the cohorts. There will be some individual drops, but I think overall, as long as students progress and we're seeing students do better and better, that's our goal. And that's the ELA and math scores. I won't spend too much time on science. They've been really consistent over the years. A little bit of drop there in eighth grade. We think we understand what that's from. We did change our science program several years back in sixth grade, and we think that had some impact. So that's one piece. Science is going to be changing. The New York State science standards were adopted, and over the next five years, we'll see some changes in curriculum. And the state has not indicated whether or not they're changing the assessments. There's a little tension between the curriculum side and the assessment side at State Ed. They don't, those two departments don't really talk to each other, is what I'm learning. Surprise. But I know people who go up and do curriculum work up there, and then they come back and they ask questions about the assessments, and they're like, uh, don't ask us. That's the assessment department.
Eighth grade science don't sound the students take our science also in eighth grade, so that...
They do, so, yeah. And that's, but that's been the case for a while, so that hasn't changed from 2011. So, you know, there has been a little bit of drop, but it's not a significant drop that worries me at this point. If we drop down below ninety, we'll, we'll be concerned, but I think it's fairly consistent over the years.
Tim, just a question on the use of these scores. So obviously, look at it broadly and informs instruction and decisions about what we can do, do better, tweak.
Yes.
It's not being used for teacher evaluations because it, from a legal standpoint, because we're in the, in the interim period, that'll be TBD, I guess, as time goes on. With student placement decisions at HCC, at this juncture, they're not being used to...
Right, and we never rely on state tests for that decision. Never use state tests for deciding the accelerated student in math or science. We felt like our local assessments were more rigorous, particularly in science, when you have that many students, it just isn't really disaggregating at the top. So we felt we needed more rigorous ways to separate the students, particularly at the high end.
Makes sense. And that's something of a general understanding in the community. I want to make sure that it's still...
Thank you. And for teacher evaluation, we have two more years of the moratorium on using, only the three through eight math and ELA tests cannot be used for teacher evaluation. We still have, we still get a growth score from the state for teachers and have to use the state tests, but that's under what's called their original score. We calculate the original score, but then we have a transition score. Both are reported to State Ed. And it's the transition score that counts right now. So we have two more years of that. So we'll look at Regents data. Again, we're trying, the purpose of the state test at the elementary level is to make sure you are looking for students who might be at risk of not meeting the standards at the high school and at risk of not graduating. So it's to help drive that curriculum change so that you can align your curriculum. So looking at the Regents data with that in mind, the Common Core English, I put both years up there, and you will see very consistent results on our first and second administration of the new Common Core ELA. We just had our first administration last year. You're seeing rates that are extremely high. Most of our students scoring at the eighty-fifth to a hundred, which is exceeding expectations by the state. Level four is meeting expectations. We don't have the rankings yet for 2017, but in sixteen, our ELA's Regents score, we would be ranked number five in New York State and number two in Westchester, which shows that we are preparing our students for meeting those benchmarks. And not just barely, we're, we're doing it at a very high level. So even though we might have some ups and downs in our three through eight tests, I think by the time they get to high school, the kids are well-prepared to read and write.
Who was number one? Just curious.
I think I know, and I'll whisper it to you later. Always beating us, and I'm...
We don't have it on, so...
I'll whisper it to you.
It's interesting how those scores are very similar to the sixth grade ELA scores, though. Like our percentages compared to the county and compared to the state.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixth grade's a pretty good indication of the cohort and how they do.
Yep.
And those, that average, ninety-four average on the English Regents is, it's, these were the harder Common Core tests.
Yes.
So we, Dwayne Smith is considering, remember, we had, we used to give the Regents in eleventh. We moved it to tenth because the eleventh grade year is so hard. And then we had to move it back to eleventh with Common Core. That was the recommendation from the state. So we are now evaluating whether or not it's worth moving it back to tenth grade because our students do so well. So Dwayne's going to be doing some sample testing of students, not giving them full tests, but giving them items and seeing if students feel, if we think students are ready to take the Regents in tenth grade again and still get these types of results.
And the reason is just to ease up their eleventh grade?
Eleventh grade, yeah. Yeah. Because we weren't happy that we put it back, but we, every district was doing that because we weren't sure what the tests were going to be like. We feel we're preparing our kids. We just want to make sure that we're, they're that prepared in tenth grade. So we'll be doing an analysis of that. I don't, we're not doing it this year. It would be, we're at least a year out from that if we do it at all. In algebra, I did present these results to you before, again, really well, but I want to look at a really interesting chart. So this graph is looking at passing and then also just level five. From the start of the Common Core Algebra Regents, where we only had fifteen percent of our students at level five, going up to seventy-eight percent of our students at that high rate. So that is our time to refine the curriculum, make sure it's aligned, and then the deeper teachers understand the curriculum and the expectation, the better we can teach for that. And that's showing the math department's effort to keep revising and refining their practice. So we went up sixty-three points in that level, which is really great. And in 2016, we were ranked number one in Westchester for scoring at level five. So I think our students are really prepared in math as well. Again, despite any fluctuation we may have in some of the results at the lower level, we're getting our students ready by the time they take that Algebra Regents exam. Our science Regents have not changed at all over the years. The tests haven't changed yet. They may in a few years, but our results have been really consistent. And as you can see, we have a high rate of mastery and passing, high averages. Chemistry seems lower. Chemistry is a harder Regents, but one thing I should point out, when you look at the we're getting our students ready by the time they take that algebra Regents exam. Our science Regents have not changed at all over the years. The tests haven't changed yet, they may in a few years, but our results have been really consistent and as you can see, we have a high rate of mastery and passing, high averages. Chemistry seems lower. Chemistry is a harder Regents, but one thing I should point out, when you look at the end for that, we have one hundred and eighty-four students testing a chemistry, that's really unusual. Usually, chemistry is seen as an advanced Regents and other districts will sometimes have a non-Regents for students. We don't do that. We don't have a non-Regents chemistry class, and that's intentional. That's our teacher saying, "No, we want all kids to take Regents level because we know we can prepare our kids." So we don't offer that non-Regents, which would skew results, where, you know, you're only testing maybe half that population and the others take a non-Regents chemistry. We have a high, you know, we have a high participation rate because we want all of our students to take that.
And that one hundred and eighty-four students, that's not just a per-grade rate, there's...
We have tenth and eleventh grade students take chemistry. Right, so that's including the accelerated students and the on-level students. And these results, again, haven't changed either. Very high rates of passing, high rates of mastery, they've been very consistent. We are transitioning to new Regents exams in social studies and you'll be hearing more about that this year. So we'll be phasing in new Regents exams.
The alternative fact history.
To the geometry that we decided to not use the Regents exam, are there other subjects where that's worthy of consideration? Do you think the Regents are of high enough quality now and stable enough that they're okay? What do you think?
So we'd like to see how the change in the Common, well, it's not Common Core, but the new Regents exams in social studies, we'll take a look at those. We do have to offer both of those, actually, so that's not an option because students need, they need five Regents exams to take, so we have to make sure we're offering five for graduation. That's the minimum. In the science, again, we'll see how the state changes the science tests to make sure that they're still high-quality assessments. The Science Department hasn't been interested in getting rid of Regents. We've talked about it a bit in chemistry, but we just haven't made that decision and haven't really come up with a rationale for it yet. I think part of it is the fact that we do test all those students, that there is some sense of accomplishment for those kids who do take chemistry to pass the Regents, makes them feel good. So those are things we're weighing. You know, there's a lot to consider, but we are thinking about moving toward a more performance-based assessment in chemistry. And these were some of the highlights, again, of where we've ranked really well. Our results are phenomenal, but that doesn't mean we stop. So what are we doing? Some priorities, and this is where we're looking at some work, and I can certainly report back to the board on what our findings are. So one thing that I'm curious about is we've been looking at implementing a new literacy program at WACIS in three through five. So our results have been a little unstable there, so I'm wondering how well we're implementing that. So that's something I'm going to take on and to really study that more deeply. I started to at the end of last year and going to continue that this year. We also are going to start really looking at student writing samples to see if the writing is of the quality we would expect. So we're, again, not just going to rely on state tests, let's actually look at student work and analyze that through the lens of our criteria. And then we're also digging a little deeper in data, and this is where Peggy's really helping out, her expertise in the data system she created at Comen Hill over the past several years. She's now expanding to K5 and really diving deeply into unpacking some data K5, which will help, we think, illuminate some of the areas that we need to look at. We're looking at our academic intervention services and our response intervention so that we can make sure that students with disabilities who need extra support and help are getting the supports to be able to lift them to proficiency. And we're looking at reading, we do have reading specialists at WACIS and looking at their roles and the type of work and how can they target in the areas where our data points us that could be some areas to really leverage student achievement. And we're just concerned about that sixth grade ELA, what happened there? So we just want to understand that even though we still are doing it really well. In mathematics, we're implementing the new investigations program. They actually have training today, so we will be monitoring that carefully and seeing how our students perform in the new elementary program. And again, looking at our math specialists, their role, and looking at the seventh grade. We've made the shift to the new pathways in seventh grade. Kim Lappel, Principal of Crittenham, and Lisa Pellegrino, our Math Chair, are putting together resources and information on the website at the middle school so that we're meeting our efforts to really communicate the changes to families. We're not hiding behind that. We're saying this is, embracing it, and we're making sure parents understand the changes we've made. So we've been really reaching out to make sure all parents understand what the new program is. We'll be monitoring that really carefully this year. And then in science, we're really anticipating this shift in the science standards and possibly new assessments, so we're really looking at that. And we'll also be evaluating the new STEAM courses that you so generously approved for next year, or for this year. So I'll be giving some feedback on how those courses are going. And I think that's it.
That was a great...
Thank you.
Really was. It was so clear.
Thank you. Try to make sense of this. And these results came really late this year. They came in mid-August, so I've been working really hard to understand them myself.
Appreciate the data. It's really helpful to look at it and you're all over some of the issues.
Thank you.
Tim, I appreciate that you connected priorities for this year to data, which sometimes people don't do. They spend a lot of time looking at data and not talking about what they're going to do with that data, so...
Well, that's why I think we improved, is because we just don't show data and then walk away from it. We do use it, and that's always important to it. The data speaks, that's the reality, so if you don't look at it, it's not...
Thank you, very helpful.
Thanks for your support and your time.
Just getting back to that sixth grade thing, you could communicate to the staff. I mean, we're still number one or number whatever, it was still very high, so I'm wondering if there was something with the...
They were sure to tell them that.
Yeah, be sure, because it must be, within Putnam and the other counties, we're still ranked so high, and I wonder if there was something in that test that, this past year that was just odd for that whole grade, so...
Was there something else going on, like that time of year? Is there...
Just looking at other indicators?
Something that was distracting to the kids.
Stressful or distracting, I'm not sure.
Interesting, what are the variables that go Westchester-wide?
Or national, terrorism, something that was very distracting.
That's going...
It was English, not English, but it was English.
It was ELA.
I mean, the one thing to keep in mind is when economists use this data, and God knows they do, they tend to use math much more than English because there just inherently is a little bit more subjectivity in the ELA.
And you can't get away from it.
It just is what it is. One thing that we did different, which is a factor that we always ask ourselves, we're not sure, is we send our tests out now to be scored, and that was the first time at Crittenham, that teachers didn't score the tests, that they were sent out to Lyric with other teachers scoring the tests. I don't know if that had an impact. There's checks for that and there's a system for doing it. I don't suspect that'll happen, and I think over time, we'll see how the results are and it'll explain some more to us. And again, the teachers will dig down and they'll look at some sample items and we'll figure out something. I don't understand it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now that brings us to ten point two, which is a per pupil expenditure report, and this is something that the board had asked for, I guess, last year, last year, and wanted to thank you and Jim Reese, our Business Department, for putting this together so quickly and so thoroughly for us. And I'm going to turn over the floor to Jim.
To Jim.
Jim, thanks for coming to be here to present this to us.
There you go. Okay, I do have a couple of charts up here, but just a few notes before we get into these charts. I didn't put all the charts up that you have in your board pack of the report that I gave you, but I did select some that I thought were just important to take a look at. What the board has is a comparative analysis of 2015-16 expenditures per pupil. The reason we did 2015-16 is because I started this in the spring before the 16-17 year was finished, so we don't have a complete snapshot of 16-17. That probably will not be available until around the January timeframe. That's, this information all comes from the Negotiations Clearinghouse, Putnam, Westchester, BOSI's. They provide various statistical analysis, so picked those up and did a comparison. One thing that I would like to point out is this is simply one statistic that we use to compare school districts. There's many other out there, financial, even on an expenditure basis, we have something called the approved operating expense per pupil, where they factor out some of the revenue, they factor out some of the expense and divide by pupil. Sometimes they change the pupil count. They'll use something called the TAPU, T-A-P-U. You may have heard that if you're into the State Aid. It's the total aidable pupil units, okay? It's, again, it's a pupil count. Sometimes they use an ARWADA pupil count, resident weighted average daily attendance pupil count. So there's numerous statistics out there. So this is simply one that we can take a look at, and I will caution the board also that there's various things that you have to take into consideration when you're looking at this particular statistic. For example, the size of the districts makes a difference, and that's why I put a, kind of a Hills in here. It's a very small district, but you can get an idea of the impact it has on this particular statistic. So the size of the district really matters. Some of the expenses that you have in a school district are not pupil-driven, and I'll give you a couple of examples there. Does not take into consideration the capacity that you have in the buildings, and I'll give you an idea of what I'm talking about there. And it also doesn't take into consideration any offsets that you have on the expenditures. This is simply the total expenditure that is made on a particular area divided by a pupil count, okay? So if there's an offset, it's not taken into consideration here, and I'll give you an example there. So just an example of this idea, your first slide, which is called Board Superintendent Finance and Staff. It shows, what I tried to show here is the size of the district really matters in terms of some of your fixed costs. For example, every school district hires a superintendent. If we hire our superintendent and pay her two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and Poconica Hills hires a superintendent and pays two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and Scarsdale hires a superintendent two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, the denominators for each of those, Byron Hills, we divide by two-four-seven-nine, two-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-nine pupils. Poconica Hills, we divide by five-hundred-and-thirty, okay, significantly smaller, so it's going to have a significantly higher per pupil for our superintendent cost. In Scarsdale, we're dividing by four-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-eight, so a larger denominator, it's going to tend to push that per pupil cost down. So as you're going through these various areas, and there's twelve areas that we captured here, and then employee benefits, I did break out some of the particular employee benefits that we have here, so you can take a look at them. And again, many of them are not pupil-driven, so we have to keep that in mind when we're looking at this statistic. The other thing is enrollment trends really have an impact, and I gave an example in here. Byron Hills in 2014-15 had a total expenditure of eighty-four million, seven-hundred-three-thousand, seven-hundred-eighty-three dollars. We had a pupil count of two-thousand-five-hundred-sixty. When you do that division, you end up with thirty-three thousand, eighty-seven dollars for per pupil expense for that year. If you go to the next year, our comparative year, 2015-16, Byron Hills spent less on a total expenditure basis, eighty-four million, three-hundred-ninety-four thousand, so a little over three-hundred-thousand dollars less they spent in the 15-16 year. Pupil count was down, so we divided by two-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-nine, and you end up with a higher per pupil, thirty-four thousand, zero-four-four. So we spent less from one year to the next, but because the pupil count went down, then we have a higher per pupil expense. So you just have to keep that in mind, which leads us into capacity, okay? Byron Hills has capacity built into the buildings right now. We could probably add a hundred, two-hundred students, depending on what grade level they came in, without increasing expenses at all, okay? It might increase class size a little bit, but you wouldn't be increasing, you wouldn't have to hire a new teacher, okay? Wouldn't have to provide more electricity, wouldn't have to provide more heat. So that's an idea, the capacity, this particular study like this doesn't take into consideration the capacity that we have if our enrollment turns and starts increasing. And then the fourth thing that I mentioned was the offsets. Debt service, for example. What, the district applied one-point-five-million dollars from reserves toward the debt service in the district in 15-16, okay? If you took that one-point-five-million divided by the pupil count, it would actually decrease your per pupil expense by about six-hundred dollars per pupil, okay? So it would drop it down. Again, if the district accepts donations that are brought into the general fund, okay, some of the donations are brought into the general fund, those expenditures show as expenditures, but they're not offset by the donation that comes in, the revenue that comes in, okay? So this is just total expenditure divided by total pupil. So that, again, we have to keep that in mind as we're moving forward with a report like this.
Quick question for you. When you look at the different cost categories, are the, is the way that different districts treat the cost categories more or less uniform, or are there a lot of allocation differences between schools?
We all use a uniform system of accounts. There is some variation, but most of your expenses are coded the same district to district, okay? For example, BOSI's, when you subscribe to BOSI's service, you charge your expense to a four-ninety code, okay? So it might be Board of Education, four-ninety, it might be Curriculum Development, four-ninety, it might be Business Office, four-ninety, so there's always a four-ninety code, and that's consistent through the districts. Some districts will take, if you have department chairs, they may charge them under administrative as opposed to under two-one-one-zero instructional code. So there are some variations between the codes, but for the most part, because we're all using the uniform system of accounting, then they pretty much fall in at least the same function.
Okay.
Again, what I did is I took, there's fifty-four districts in the Putnam, Westchester, Rockland Clearinghouse study, so I took these eight, pulled them out to take a comparison. They're basically your high wealth, high-performance districts, and just took a snapshot on some of these, take a look at and see what you're doing. And one that came up, I thought was very interesting, was plant. Plant is your buildings and grounds and maintenance of the facilities, and Byron Hills is third out of the fifty-four districts. And you look at that and you think, oh, well, that's high, but on the flip side, the way a business official did it for a number of years, one of the things that Board of Education's will do sometimes is if they have to cut the budget, they go to buildings and grounds and cut the budget. They don't want to impact the instructional program. So a lot of times, you'll see a real low per pupil expense under plant. I commend the board for being in the position that you are right here because you're taking care of the facilities. Long run, you don't have to, you may avoid a bond in the future where a lot of districts will let the facilities, they won't keep up with the maintenance, and then at some period, they end up doing a bond proposition proposal and they scoop up all the maintenance things that have been neglected over the years and try to do those. So I commend the board for the foresight here in keeping, you know, the plant up to date and well-maintained.
On that one, too, if you look at Weinberg and Bronsvil, they're small, but they have a lower, you know, cost per pupil plant. But is part of it potentially that because we are shrinking and so our plant is larger and we have excess capacity, by virtue of that, our per pupil plant is going to be a bit higher?
That's, yes, that certainly factors into it, yeah. Okay, second area that I took like that was media. Media is an interesting one. That's your libraries, but also computers. So you're significantly higher than comparative groups with the, with the exception of Poconica Hills, which I, you know, when I'm looking at this, I kind of factored that out now. I just wanted to prove a point here. But if you look at that, that's high. So what this would lead me to do, working in the district, is when we start working on budget, I would look at what we're budgeting here, what we're doing, how we're supporting the program, and kind of compare that with other districts. In other words, take it down to the next level. This is global here. This is, this is a couple of areas that, you know, all the library expense, all the media expense, add it together, divide by a number of pupils. So I would, I would like to take this one down to the next level and see specifically what's going on with some of these.
Jim, if you wouldn't mind the question, you mentioned something before, if we got a grant from the foundation for technology, that's, that wouldn't be captured in this data then because, right, because it's not, it's an expenditure, but we're not capturing that on the revenue line?
It depends on how the district accepts the grants. Now, I talked to Susan about this, and sometimes the district will accept donations or grants into the general fund, but other times, they will accept grants and donations, the foundation grants go into the special aid fund. Okay, so you don't, that is not included in here, expense or, you know, on the revenue. So that's accounted for in a separate fund, okay?
You're saying that because that tends to be one area that we've gotten significant funding from the foundation on, and I'm just curious where that would be.
It doesn't impact the general fund at all.
But it's also, sorry, something that we focused on, the district focused its funds directly because we were making so many upgrades and remembering so in the last few, significant upgrades in the last few years, right, and getting...
I mean, again, just focusing on this because the foundation's, I don't know, several hundred, you know, a couple of hundred thousand dollars probably that year, that, I won't remember if that was the year we did the network upgrade or not, but the point that I'm making is, let's say that was a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, that should be, that number should be smooth somehow because that wouldn't be reflective...
They're saying it's not in...
It's not in at all.
Separately.
Not at all.
No, understood. Right, so that, I mean, since...
Also even higher.
Yeah, or, yeah.
It would impact it.
Right, if that donation had been accepted into the general fund, then this would even be higher than what it is right now.
But even from a district perspective, spending the money to put in that infrastructure would come out of our budgets.
Understood.
You know, not all donated monies.
And then, and then again, it does not take into consideration any offsets. So if you did infrastructure upgrades through BOSI's or purchased, you know, your IPAs, your purchase agreements through BOSI's, you're receiving BOSI's aid back on that, which, again, is on the revenue side, but we're not looking at revenues here. We're simply looking at the expenses that were made in each of these categories divided by a number of pupils.
Do we ever look at that, you know, the expenses, you know, coming out of it?
Oh, yeah, you can, again, we can take this down to whatever level you want, you know, so we could say, you know, how much, how much of the tax levy is supporting each of these areas. So you can take a look at that, and then you would break out, in this particular example, you would look at what the BOSI's aid is coming back in on your computer instructional program and deduct that, and you could show that. So, yeah, again, you can take it to whatever level.
Then not really getting at how our expenses are compared to other school districts, which is tough, but how we fund it, that's, I mean, kind of...
Yeah, but even if we factored that in, we don't know, they're probably not factoring it in to their numbers either, so we're not, if we factored it in and they gave us the numbers...
Yeah, that would be, that would be for your...
Comparing apples and oranges, we'd be comparing halves and oranges.
Right, that would give Byron Hills additional information, but it wouldn't give you a comparison unless you, unless I specifically went to the districts, picked up their budget appropriation up their budget appropriation, their status reports, and then was able to work with the business official in the other district to see specifically what's going on. So that, that kind of work can be done, but again, it's, it's probably overkill. I think, I think a snapshot like this, and then if you pick up an area that you want additional information because it looks like it might be higher than some of your neighbors or some of the benchmark districts, then, then we take a look here and say, okay, well, will certainly make sense in 15, 16, because we upgraded infrastructure, we started a one-on-one initiative, we, we hired new staff in that area, so there's a number of, of reasons that that could be where it is, okay?
And we're sure those numbers, that information isn't being included for the other districts, right?
Well, what, what, the Clearinghouse does, they pick up your annual financial report. We have to submit that to the state. We also submit a copy to BOSI's, and then what BOSI's does is, again, because of the, the accounting system that everybody's using, BOSI simply picks up those numbers from the SD3 and puts together their reports. Total instruction is another area that, the graph doesn't look like we're too high here, but if you look at the numbers, we're at 18,068 per pupil, and, you know, some of the other districts around that, high 15s, 16s. So on a per pupil basis, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars per pupil more. And total instruction is, is all your 2,000 codes. Your 2,000 codes start with the 2-0-1-0, which is curriculum development, and goes through your athletic program. So it's, it's all the 2,000 codes, they total that, and then divide by the pupil count, so that's where we are. So what would be interesting to look at, and you'll see another slide coming up in just a minute, is staffing and fringe benefits typically are 80% of the school district's budget, so that would be the area that you would look at for the total instruction, because that's probably where most of your staff lies in, in those codes.
And this one was the one to me that was interesting to look a little bit further into because, well, it's big dollars as, as the budget goes, and it looked like, to your point, if you take out mechanical hills, because they're really an outlier, and you look at the others, and you look at sort of the average and the median versus us, there is quite a, there's a double digit significant difference. Now, that may be explained by different initiatives we have, it could be explained by a lot of different things, it could be, you know, many different factors, but I think just having a little bit of understanding as to what factors lead into that difference is helpful down the road, yeah.
And, and this one, again, well, just staffing, for example. I did include a chart in the narrative part, which shows the salaries, came from the, one of the state data sites, and it shows our mediums, median salary, and it shows the 95th percentile, and you can see through, with the benchmark districts, you're not out of line with those. So then the next thing, which is not presented here though, is the demographic. How many people do you have on that top step, all the way down to the lower right corner versus some of these other districts? What kind of turnover have these other districts had bringing in new staff? Because new staff can be 60, 70,000 dollars on the salary alone, lower than, you know, some of the, some of the more seasoned veterans that we have, okay? So that's, that would be an area that you could do further investigation with the school districts, because you could get a scattergram. Everybody has a scattergram, get into negotiations, and you could actually see placement on the salary schedule for, you know, these other districts. So I think that would be a, an interesting one, again, because salary and benefits are approximately 80% of, you know, your school budgets, you know, in the county here.
And you did staffing ratios, and that looked like it was relatively in line too.
Staffing ratios are relatively in line, but our, when you look at the chart, our pupils per staff are a little bit lower than some of the other ones, and you want to be high on that one, well, you want to be high if you want your per pupil expense to be down, okay? The lower you are, the higher the per pupil expense, inverse there. Employee benefits, again, that was one that I think you can take another look at. Particular areas I, I gave you also, health insurance, TRS, ERS, and when I see one like the TRS, the Teachers Retirement System, which is higher on a per pupil basis than some of the neighbors, that kind of would lead me to believe that, you know, again, your salaries, your salary levels are not high, so you either have the demographic, you have more people on that lower right salary schedule, or you have more people, okay? Because the, the teachers retirement system is simply, you know, you're paying a percentage of salaries, of that set, so, you know, one or the other has to be happening there. And again, that would be one that you could take a look at.
And then the age of this, the longevity of the staff, that would also be, right, meaning the, if teacher's more experienced, then that's, obviously that'll tie to the salary, that'll also tie to an increase. So it's, it's not necessarily a bad factor, that's, you know, if you have low turnover and you're keeping new teachers, and you, you benefit costs are going to be higher.
Right, and, and just tying, tying this into the previous report, I mean, you look at the results that you're getting on, on all your, the test scores, so, you know, do you want all the seasoned veterans to leave? No. Do you want to have a mix of staff? Yes, okay? And so that's, and over time you get that mix. People retire, you bring in new people. But the, the employee benefits, TRS I thought was interesting, the ERS, Employees Retirement System, same thing. But one thing that may be impacting there is you, we have a district-operated fleet for transportation. A lot of the districts in Southern Westchester contract transportation, so their, their expense for transportation would be falling under transportation, the contract transportation, as opposed to, we would have salaries under transportation, and then we would have benefits under the benefit code. So that, that could be one factor that's, that's pushing like the ERS a little bit. And then the health insurance is the other one. It would be interesting to get a comparison, because everybody seems to have a premium share on their active employees. I'm, I'm a Carmel board member, I'm a Board of Education member, can you believe that? And Carmel, just this last round of negotiations, got a share from the retirees. Up until this last round of negotiations, when somebody retired from Carmel, the district picked up 100% of their, in, in medical insurance. And then when they turned 65 and became Medicare, Medicare was primary, Medicare became primary and the district secondary, but it's, again, most districts have already gotten that share from the retirees at this point. So it'd be interesting to, to take a look to see how, how Byram Hills' premium share compares with everybody else. And the other thing is the number of retirees, okay, which, which can push this also. So if you have, if you have, you know, more retirees than some of the other districts proportionately, then you would also see a little bit higher number here.
And you see, if you go back to transportation towns, you're seeing that in the employee benefit, in the social security comp, because of payroll tax and the workers' comp, because those would fall, send you transportation.
Exactly, yeah, same, same thing. More people, more staff than, than those benefits that are salary-related, great, are going to be a little bit higher.
And for the districts that outsource, is it all going to be in the pupil transportation bucket?
Yes. This is, this is the pupils per professional staff, and again, your, your numbers are not way out of line, but you are a little bit lower than the other districts, which, which again is, is worth taking a look at. And that's not uncommon for a district that is decreasing enrollment. It's much easier to deal with enrollment as you're increasing than decreasing, because, for example, you get to that, you get to that point when you're increasing, you break a section and add a teacher, because you've hit a level either board policy or contractual agreement. When you're decreasing, it's, it's difficult, because if you take this section out of fourth grade, then you're going to have 27 in a class, but if you leave it in, you're going to have 22 in a class. So what do you, do you take it out? So those are, are really tough decisions. The next year, if your fourth grade coming up is a little bit lower, then, okay, now we look at the section to see if we can take it out. So increasing is always a lot easier to deal with in a decreasing population. And I did give you a, a little chart, well, you'll, you'll see a chart here, and I think I got a number for it. Pupils, non-professional staff, same thing, and again, with your transportation, that's going to impact, your numbers a little bit lower here, so that would impact because you have more non-professional staff than some of the other districts. On a per pupil basis, you're going to be a little bit lower here.
What, can you explain the, the cost per pupil employee benefits disability insurance? Everybody, we seem to be very high and everybody...
Yeah, disability is not required. The state requires you to have workers' compensation. Disability, you don't, the state doesn't, it's not mandated. So the district at some point negotiated that into a contract, I, I would imagine. I haven't, I've just started looking.
So all these other districts are just not offering that as a benefit?
Yes. If, if you're seeing the zero there, they're not offering that as a benefit.
It was negotiated.
And the last chart is enrollment, and as I started to say, if you, if you take a look at your enrollment, it has dropped, I looked at this five-year trend here, and you've dropped almost nine and a half percent over that five-year period. Chappaqua has dropped almost six, 5.8% over that same period. You can see some of the other districts. Linebrook is kind of staying about the same. Bronxville actually has increased. Okay, so now what happens to Bronxville per pupil expense, okay? If their enrollment is, is increasing and they haven't had to increase their expense because they're bringing some of these, you know, filling out some of the classes, then that's why, that's why their per pupil is a little bit lower. Scarsdale, same thing, they're kind of holding their own. Tuckahoe's kind of, I threw Tuckahoe in because I worked there for a couple of years recently on an internship, I just thought it was interesting. And then I did put a chart in your, in the narrative part about special education, and if you look at your special education numbers, you're at about 14% in 15, 16, and that's a little bit higher than, than our benchmark districts also. Special education is interesting because you're, you're really mandated in terms of class sizes and, and, you know, you're really restricted, I guess, in class sizes and what you have to do. So again, with a little bit higher numbers in special education, that would tend to push your, your per pupil expense up in the instructional area there. We didn't look at revenues, as I mentioned before, but I will mention, because it's a statistic that the, you find in the Clearinghouse, that the true value tax rate per thousand is $15.27, and that's, that's a comparison. You can't really compare the tax rate on assessed value, which is what is used to levy your, or to prepare your tax bill. The tax bill that you get home is prepared using the tax rate on the assessed per thousand. But the true value, what they do, because assessors in, in towns all vary their assessment practices, the state develops an equalization rate, they apply that to assessed value.
We've been monitoring that very, very closely, and we're very, I mean, I, I see you say it's 42, we always saw it around 45, 46, but who knows where that is. But that, we, Greg always said, and I agree with him frankly, that that was the best measure in many ways of how we're, how we're doing.
That's, it's, it's a very impressive number. Again, your, your per pupil expenses, there's actually, if you've been looking at onboard, and there's been a couple of other articles coming out about per pupil expenses now. And New York State is highest, you know, when you compare it to everybody else in the country. They don't get into district-specific, but they, they have some good information on the per pupil expense. And it talked about wealthier districts' ability to provide program versus some of the upstate districts that are, that are not as fortunate, and there's some just really good articles, and I'll, I'll, I'll pull some of that information together and ship it out, because I just think it's very interesting to look at. But the, the, the median for the 54 districts is $18.41, so you're, you know, you're over $3 less than the median. So exactly, I would, I would agree. This is a, this is a statistic that you, you know, you want to just put out there so everybody sees it.
We do have it obviously.
Okay, so that's, that's what we have so far.
It's very helpful.
Well, are you, were you asked by those who asked you to do this, to draw any conclusions from what you're looking at? Any conclusions to be drawn yet in this?
I don't, we weren't drawing conclusions yet. I think what, what we were doing was just a comparative analysis. We wanted to see how we stacked up some of these other districts. I think, I think the, the going ahead part that I mentioned before is I think you go back and you look at some of the areas where that, that total instruction, I think we need to look at that. I think we need to look at where teacher salaries are, the demographic, where the salaries are, where, where the staff falls on the scattergram. I think we need to look at media. I think we can look at plant just to see, you know, why that is up there, but again, I, I feel that's a good thing. So that, that I think is the next step, is to just get into some more specific, take it down to the next level on some of these areas.
Thank you, this is great.
So first of all, thank you very much, because it's something that we decided as a board that we wanted to take a look at. I think it's a metric that's becoming clearly more and more used in policy circles and the media, and so people focus on it, and I think it does help, just as we talked about, like informing instruction by data, this is a way to inform of our overall decision-making by data, and even though something's higher, maybe perfectly fine, everyone making investment there, but then again, we need to know so we'll easily consciously make that decision yes or no. Things is really important, and this is, is a great level of detail. And I, I, I would agree, as a next step, there are certain areas where, you know, there seems to be like a very clear explanation, or we're just so much in line, we're close. And then there are others where there's a little bit of a disconnect, but it could be for a lot of different reasons. To focus on, you know, just taking a little bit of a closer work on instruction, on benefits, on, I guess, on, what would I say, transportation, because that's, that's one where we're different than a lot of other districts. Just to take a, you know, just to really understand what's behind the numbers, just one more layer as you, you know, continue to look at this, I think will be very, very helpful. Let's go over to budgets, Susan.
All right.
Yeah, looking at the overall number is very deceptive. You know, it's, it doesn't give you a full picture.
Yes, you do have to be careful looking at a, well, any statistics, but, yeah.
No single statistic, because the true value tax rate is going to be driven by the tax base, to be fair. So wealthier community is going to have a better, on the other hand, this has flaws in it around things like scale and it overly simplifies, you know.
Right.
So you got, this way you do have to look at multiple metrics.
Yeah.
But my guess is that this will come back as we're talking about budget and line items, I think this is going to be very helpful to all of us, especially those of us without a real finance background. Should I have this scaled? Thank you.
Would the board like to see Jim take a deeper dive exercise of this at a public board meeting or with the budget committee?
That is a, yeah, that's a really good question.
I think initially the budget committee.
And then report back to the board.
If we identified something at that point.
Budget committee can report back.
I'll have to figure out what that looks like, I guess, in one of our, our budget committee meetings.
Sure.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you, Jim. Jim won't be here at our next meeting, so that works out well. This is me with the budget committee. All right, thank you. All right, and now we are, I'm going to pass this over to Jim, but before we open the discussion, just to put this on the table, can I have a motion to accept Byram Hills Education Foundation Fall 2016 grant? Okay, in a second. Thank you, and then Jim, do you want to talk about this? Talk a little bit about this grant, this is exciting, and the Education Foundation recommended holding approval until they could make sure they could finance this at the end of last year. I'm really glad that they were able to. This involves a resident artist regarding music instruction at Crittenin for both orchestra and chorus. Deepak has been looking into having these professionals come to work with students in, in smaller group settings for music instruction. You know, we don't want to sacrifice our music programs as we don't have time for the individual, more individual instruction that can occur. So this is a good opportunity for him to use this at Crittenin. We're really excited, you know, the Education Foundation stayed with us straight through to the end of the year in supporting a lot of these initiatives that we put forward.
It is, it's just, it's so amazing when I think back, it is astounding, it really is. When I think back of all the innovation because of the Education Foundation, it's, we are truly a fortunate district to have such a partnership.
I remember with the foundation, with smart boards, with a big deal.
Yes, that's right. I remember when the foundation started.
Whiteboards, smart boards came in, said, oh my goodness, how are we ever going to incorporate this into the budget? What are you doing?
You were worried about, we weren't going to buy chalk anymore, right?
The coal franchise was very concerned, but we managed to get past that.
And I would be remiss if we didn't also thank the public, because without the public's donation, we wouldn't have this Education Foundation as successful as it is, so thank you to everybody.
How old was the foundation, how many years?
Since 1994.
It's about 23 years, yeah. I remember Tom Harrison, a lot of these people.
And it's so wonderful that their goals are in support of what our district goals are. We really remain so aligned over the years.
Well, that was a vital issue that took, took a few years to straighten out, but now that it's been straightened out, it's a wonderful partnership, and I think many districts just look on with envy in what we've been able to do, and sometimes I feel a little guilty about how great the foundation does, but it's...
Not when it benefits the kids.
The kids have no idea how great it really is.
It truly keeps us cutting edge.
Yeah, it does. It really, it really does. It really does. It's a fabulous thing.
And the amount of time that the members of the foundation donate to, it's amazing.
And I'll say one more thing, looking five, 10 years down the road, the foundations become more important than ever.
Yeah, that's right, and there's a, there's a really strong effort there that will continue and will be there for many years to come.
It's been more important than ever, Jim.
And I think the partnership that Jim, you, and Bill had, it's what sustains, you know, that's the real relationship, that we're working in tandem. It's everything, so it's great that you're continuing that with them. It's so important.
And they're, they're doing a lot of outreach, you know?
Yeah.
For kindergarten, incoming parents, it was really nice for them to hear the contributions the Education Foundation has made, and how it's going to benefit their students for the next 12 years. Good.
And this Friday they have the Wizards game. Don't forget to come out and support your teachers in your school.
Come out and watch your superintendent play the Wizards.
That's the big draw.
That might go viral.
You can be sneakers or in heels, that's what I want to know.
They make sneakers that aren't heels. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Any other comments? All in favor? With gratitude?
With gratitude, yeah.
That brings us to number 11, which is opening day student enrollment. Our student enrollment, no, this, this might be a bit of a shocker. Our demographic report estimated that we'd have 2,305 students entering our schools this year. We had 2,356 students entering our schools this year. So it's 51 students more than the demographer predicted, and only 16 less than last year. So we're really hoping to maintain some high enrollments to move in that, in that lens. We did have most of our increase in students at Wampus. We had 35 new entrants.
Wow.
Come to the building from what the demographer had predicted. So that's pretty fantastic. And we're just continuing to hope that those enrollment numbers are climbing. We know that the impact that it may have on these children in high school and courses, and how difficult that is. And I think that Bill always said that despite our situations, we do not want our kindergarteners to have less possibilities and options than our current seniors. And we'll strive to continue to make sure that's possible. But I think that boosts in the enrollment make me feel happier to do that.
We'll see if it's a blip or a boost.
A blip or a boost, that's right.
And our kindergarten number, so we are at opening day 139. We were in that, pretty small.
That's pretty small, but that's what we thought we would be. That's exactly where we thought we would be. So, you know, Coman Hill had 11 students less than we anticipated. The middle school and high school each had 20 students less than we anticipated. But still, it comes to a 16-student difference when you consider what happened at Wampus. Right. Good. And this was not the official Bed State Report, Bed Dead's in October, right? No, Bed is in October.
That's the latest, yeah.
Okay. So we will get numbers again in October, the official numbers that report to the state, right? Okay. And that brings us to staff reports. Back to me. All right, back to me. To talk a little bit about opening days, it's only been a week of school. It does feel like it's been a month of school because we've had so many activities, which have all been really great for the community. But before I get to the activities, I want to thank our operations and maintenance. It is astounding how the buildings look two weeks before school opens and then how they look when students enter the doors. And we know the labor and the effort that goes into that kind of work. And we were proud to open our doors to our students and to show them how beautiful our facilities are. So thank you to operations and maintenance, especially to Steve for all of the work that Steve Thompson did with his crew. We had a lot of activities in one week. We've had five back-to-school nights. I did attend the back-to-school nights, and we have an overwhelming number of parents who come to back-to-school night, which says, speaks volumes about our community and our parent commitment to our students' education. We also had homecoming within the first week of school, which was a first dictated often by, only by football games. And this was our one home football game that we could be sure was going to occur. Homecoming went off without a hitch. We had so many parents here Friday night supporting their children as athletes. We had great feedback from the kids as part of that experience. The pep rally is always hot in the high school, but once it folds out in the evening to the field, it's much better. We had six or seven games altogether over the weekend. Some of our, Ira, I don't want to steal your thunder if there's a word out on the teams.
Speak on, speak on.
But we had quite a few games that were happening between Friday and Saturday. And then we're going to continue our Byram excitement this Friday, the 15th, with the Wizards that are going to be coming to the high school. And that is hosted by the Education Foundation in supporting our programs as well. And today I had an opportunity also to start a circuit of principals' coffees. It's really important for me to hear what's important to parents at principals' coffees and to share with them our vision for what our school district is looking at as we're taking their, their students forward.
Which one was today?
I was at the high school today. So I plan to attend all the principals' coffees and look forward to meeting and greeting more parents there. I am meeting and greeting an amazing number of former students who now have children in the school district.
Wow.
Yes, they are. They are coming back. And that is my report.
Thank you. And Tim, your, your report?
That's what I said in my speech.
You said it. You did. Okay.
So another.
Tim can't speak anymore. But Jim, you're going to speak again to us, aren't you?
Just a couple of things. One, we did have a good opening with transportation the first week. Typical glitches the first week, 10 days of the school year, when the students are getting used to transportation again, the parents are getting used to transportation, the drivers are honing their runs. It's a little bit trying sometimes. The morning runs usually come in on time quicker than the afternoon runs. Sometimes we have some issues. I met with Trish today, actually, and we're, we're pretty much up to speed now with, we have a couple of runs that we still have to tweak a little bit, but for the most part, we're, we're running on time. We do have to hire a couple of more drivers. We did have a late resignation, so we are advertising for that. Transportation facility update, the board members that went on the tour saw the outside of the facility. And basically, what's, you know, the roof is on now, the roof over the canopy siding, the siding trim, floor leveling's been done, floor's gone down now, the windows are in and being installed. So they're, they're really moving along pretty well. It's just a very short time now before we're able to move into the offices there and then eliminate the trailers that are, that are sitting down there on the compound. Next phase, KG and D Architects are scheduling a coordination meeting so we can get going on the bus wash building also. So that's, that's the next big step there. Renewal of the Armarch Food Service Contract. The board approved the resolution renewing the contract, but there was a clerical error in the, in the resolution, or not in the resolution, in the explanation. The resolution was fine. The CPI is 1.8%. It was not 0.9. 0.9 was last year. So I just wanted to make sure the board is aware, so we have a consistency between the explanation and the, and the contract that was renewed. And the annual audit, Susan was in touch with our auditors today. We have, we're going to be having a meeting probably the week of the 25th to review the draft report, kind of an exit interview. And then we'll be coming back to the board audit committee on the 10th, October 10th. So the board will, you know, hear from the auditors and then adopt the audit there. And we had one FOIA request since the last board meeting. And just on a personal note, I would like to thank Susan. She has been invaluable on this transition. Everybody's been very nice. You know, I just, I couldn't ask for a better, you know, stepping in and people helping me out and what have it. But Susan in particular, I told her the first day, I said, I'm going to be asking you about 30,000 questions every day. Please bear with me. It will eventually go down to just one or two a day, or maybe not none. But she's been very, very valuable on this transition, so.
We expect nothing less.
Very patient, Tim.
She and everything.
Thank you very much. And that's it for staff reports, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that brings us to board reports and president report. I'm just, I signed up to do one of the roundtables, the governance roundtables, the one that Janine just sent the correction of the day. The topics are fascinating.
Oh, the West Point.
Right, the topics are so relevant, everything we're doing. So there was one on committees, and since it's going to be our retreat topic, I plan to sit on that one. So if anyone else is going, just let Janine know, and she'll register you. And just let me know if you're going too, just out of curiosity. And retreat, we all have seen, we're going to talk about in November, committees. We're going to delve into that a little bit and just talk about our processes and, and just strengthening up a little bit how we do committees. So we kind of divvied up the work, and if anybody has any questions or any thoughts on that, meantime, we have plenty of time to get ready for it, but just let me know. Okay? So are there any committee or board reports?
There was a foundation meeting, I guess, just a few days ago. And, or was it last week? It was last week.
It was last week.
Yep. And everything was going really smoothly, planning the Wizards, which we talked about, but also just, you know, heading into the big annual appeal push, which will happen in the, in the late fall, early winter, so.
Are they still mailing that out? Is it, will it be mailed?
It'll be, well, a lot of online blasts, and then they usually do one big mailing blast. I don't know for sure whether they'll do that. I'm sure they'll talk about it probably in the next meeting.
That mailing always works for me, because...
It reminds you.
Exactly.
No, but it's...
Just personally, it works for me, yeah. Very good. Any other, any other committee reports?
Then I'll give my first athletic report of the year.
I knew I couldn't say.
Absolutely. Well, as most of you know, from listening to me drone onto all these years, the board is truly a big proponent of the Byram Hills athletic program. And the fall is really the most exciting time. So many sports are active at the varsity JV and modified level that a day doesn't go by when there's not something going on in the fields. And for the past, I guess, 20 years, I made it a point of watching every varsity team play, at least one game throughout their season. Homecoming's great because I can knock a lot of those teams off my list at homecoming. But just, not to exclude anyone, but the homecoming game for football, they played a tough Harrison team, and I thought they really acquitted themselves very nicely. And Harrison is a strong team, and I thought the varsity really played well. The boys and girls soccer teams have beat each off to terrific starts. You know, we take their success pretty much for granted every year, but it's really the result of a lot of hard work. And I watched one volleyball game, and I never stopped marveling at Jared Christian's ability to coach the girls in volleyball. He is a combination of John Wooden, and, I don't know, I'm not sure who that, maybe Bill Parcells, but it's great. And just, I just urge the community, even though homecoming's over, to come down and to watch it. Even a tennis match up on the hill is really a lot of fun. And girls' field hockey is off to a good start. And I was mentioning to one of my colleagues, that years ago, years would go by where they wouldn't score a goal the entire season. Now they're just playing so beautifully. So, and you don't understand the rules to watch it, so it's no excuse. Not for you either. So come on down, enjoy it. It's a great time of year. And believe it or not, only five weeks of sectionals, so the season goes fast. And we'll have a little more detailed report once, at the next meeting, when some of these teams shake out, we'll see what they're really made of. So congratulations to the student athletes and their coaches.
And every year, we hear about sportsmanship awards.
Well, that, above all, I mean, we have some banners in the gym where we not only get sportsmanship, sportsmanship awards, we get scholar athlete awards. And all it goes to, what I always thought was one of the true strengths of the Byram Hills experience is that, as I've said many times, we focus on the student athlete, not the athlete student. And I think as long as we keep that in prime focus, we're going to be fine.
Yeah, and speaking of athletics, the Bobcat has been unveiled.
Yes, the Bobcat has been planted in his new home down by the weight room outside, so the players can high-five or low-five or anything they say, want to do the Bobcat.
Probably in starting traditions.
Bobcat is there. It's a great addition. It's a perfect location for it.
It really is. I can see the kids coming out of the locker room onto the field and, you know, lucky Bobcat.
It really is.
And that's a donation from a family that's supported our sport for decades.
Yes, and it is. And the work was done really nicely. And I just want to assure the parents and the coaches and the players that the board really does have the athletics in their heart. And our discussion about the athletic facilities tonight in the field should leave no doubt that we are monitoring it closely and we'll do the right thing by it.
Thanks, Ira. Okay. Any topics for future dundas, requests for information? Hearing none. Communications to the board? There was only one that I was aware of, the board saw that, that was a trustee from the Bedford School District Board of Education, was inquiring about a reference, and Ira handled that for us. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
And can I have a motion to approve our Board of Education minutes from August 29, 2017?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And any changes or comments?
Thank you, Donna.
All in favor? Yes, thank you, Donna. And as I mentioned before, the board already met in executive session. I mentioned which items we talked about. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second. All in favor. Good night. Thank you for watching.
Thank you.